Mr. Mercer, would you please read the statement to bring us back into open session?
Chair Swigert, I move that the record shows that the only items discussed in the closed meeting were those specifically cited in the motion to convene into the closed meeting, and those lawfully exempted from statutory meeting requirements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Mercer, seconded by Mr. Lamonia, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes.
Dr. Cotton, do you have any items resulting from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have a healthy list of administrative appointments I'd like to present to the board for approval. Mrs. Julianne H. Freeman, Assistant Principal Hickory High to Director of Attendance Enrollment and Health Services, School Administration Building. Dr. Jessica L. Ferguson-Dace, Assistant Principal Chittam Elementary to Principal Rena B. Wright, Primary. Mrs. Holly E. Tutton, Employee Relations Generalist, Human Resources to Employee Relations Administrator, Human Resources. Mrs. Tara L. Culpepper, Assistant Principal Crestwood Middle to Assistant Principal Deep Creek Central Elementary. I better correct that. Mrs. Bernice C. Daniels, Teacher Oscar Smith Middle to Assistant Principal Jolliffe Middle. Mrs. Kimberly Kithcart, Assistant Principal Western Branch Intermediate to Assistant Principal Greenbrier Intermediate. Dr. Courtney A. Van der Linden, Assistant Principal York County Public Schools to Assistant Principal Indian River High. And the following individuals served as first-year administrators during the 22-23 school year, and I'm recommending they remain at their current locations for the 23-24 school year, and board action is certainly requested for these as well. Mrs. Ashley L. Bullock, Assistant Principal Great Bridge High. Mrs. Serene Cherian, Assistant Principal Grassfield Elementary. Dr. Julie DeSheal, Assistant Principal Cedar Road Elementary. Mrs. Dawn M. Dolan, Assistant Principal Greenbrier Middle. Ms. Kimberly Epps, Assistant Principal Greenbrier Primary. Mrs. Karen Fleming, Assistant Principal Great Bridge Middle. Ms. Catherine Garrett, Assistant Principal Thurgood Marshall. Mrs. Lindsay G. Gov, Assistant Specialite Administrator, Edwards Wilson Center. Mrs. Tasha L. Haste, Assistant Principal Hickory Elementary. Mrs. Cynthia E. Johnson, Assistant Principal Southeastern Elementary. Dr. Angelina Jones, Assistant Principal B. M. Williams, Primary. Ms. Erin B. Jury, Specialite Administrator, Chesapeake Virtual Academy. Mr. Sean Cole, Assistant Principal Western Branch Middle. Ms. Kelsey Copax, Assistant Principal Deep Creek Middle. Ms. Carrie Lancaster, Assistant Principal Indian River High. Mrs. Jean Marie Park, Assistant Principal Western Branch Primary. Ms. Ashley N. Parker, Assistant Principal Crestwood Intermediate. Mrs. Catherine B. Parks, Assistant Principal Treacle Elementary. Mrs. Jennifer L. Sagendorf, Assistant Principal Butts Road Intermediate. Almost done. Mrs. Meredith L. Smith, Assistant Principal Hickory Middle. Mr. Tom Smith, Assistant Principal Chesapeake Career Center. And Mrs. Jennifer A. Spencer, Special Education Administrator, Edwards Wilson Center. Dr. Melissa D. Tyler, Specialite Administrator, Edwards Wilson Center. Mrs. Crystal M. Ulchi, Assistant Principal Hugo Owens. And Dr. Carter B. Yeomans, Assistant Principal Deep Creek Elementary.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Dr. Walker, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Lamonia, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes.
Dr. Cotton, do you have any additional items?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair, thank you. The following were selected to fill Assistant Principal One positions for the 23-24 school year. These appointments do not require board action, but I do want to announce for the community, Mrs. Ashley M. Carter, Title One Instructional Coach at Truett Intermediate to Assistant Principal One at Grassford Elementary. Mrs. Natasha R. Halsey-Holland, Teacher Indian River High to Assistant Principal One, Indian River High. Mrs. Felisata A. Rhodes, Technology Integration Specialist, Greenbrier Primary to Assistant Principal One, Truett Intermediate. And Dr. Karen A. Sweeney, Teacher Deep Creek Elementary to Assistant Principal One, Butts Road, Primary.
Do you have additional items?
I do, I have one more. And the student matter that was presented, student matter A, I recommend expulsion.
I'll entertain a motion for approval. Moved by Mr. Mercer, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Poole, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes.
Next, I'll entertain a motion on the appeal pursuant to Policy 9-21. Mr. Poole moves to uphold the decision of the Superintendent, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Scott, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with a vote of seven to one, with Board Member Walker voting in opposition.
We will now move on to the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. At this time, I'd like to call upon Pastor Keenan Tyler from Cedars of Lebanon Adventist Church, who will be giving the opening invocation. Afterward, I'll ask Brandon Wellington, a fifth grader from Southwestern Elementary School, to lead us in the pledge. Please stand as you are able.
And good evening, everyone. And good evening, School Board, and thank you for this opportunity. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you in the mighty name of Jesus. Lord, please forgive us for our sins. Please cleanse us from all unrighteousness. Lord, we're so thankful just to be in the land of the living, and so we just praise your holy name. And Lord, we just ask that you just have your way tonight. Pray that you will bless the city of Chesapeake. Bless all of our administrators. Bless all of our students, Lord God. We just pray a covering over them right now, Lord God. Just continue to be with them, and be with this meeting, Lord God. Please just bless the conversations, just be with the whole entire thing. So we thank you, Lord God, for being so good to us. And it is in the mighty name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
And we thank you to Pastor Tyler and to Brandon for joining us tonight with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. We are now moving on to awards and recognitions. The first item is the memorial resolution. Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Chairman Swigert. At the request of the Superintendent, I have prepared a resolution honoring the life and service of one of our esteemed employees. This resolution honors Mr. Sean Christopher Rayner, who served as a special education teacher before his passing this past October. We have invited members of Mr. Rayner's family to join us. If Mr. or Mrs. Clifton Rayner Jr. are with us, I encourage you to please come forward. At this time, I would like to read the resolution. Be it known to all persons that we, the members of the Chesapeake School Board here assembled on this 22nd day of May 2023, do hereby pay tribute to the life and memory of Mr. Sean Rayner. Whereas Mr. Sean Rayner graduated from Longwood University in 1994 with a bachelor's degree in psychology and education, then continued his education at Longwood University, where in 1996 he received a master's degree in special education. And whereas he started teaching as a special education teacher in 1996 at Hickory High School, and then in 2021 moved on to teach at Great Bridge High School, where he served the children, their parents, and others with distinction and honor in these positions for the past 18 years. And whereas Mr. Rayner served the Chesapeake Public Schools as a gymnastics coach and a JV cheerleading coach to help children succeed in extracurricular activities. And whereas he was highly esteemed by his colleagues, students, and friends as an invaluable asset to the school system and to the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the School Board of the City of Chesapeake, do gratefully acknowledge his service to the school system and extend to his family our heartfelt sympathy at his passing. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be made a part of the minutes of this date and the original presented to his family as evidence of our esteem and reverence for the memory of Mr. Sean Rayner. This resolution is attested by each member of the School Board, our Superintendent, and the Clerk of the Board. Madam Chair, at this time, I respectfully request adoption of the resolution.
Does this require a revote? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution? Moved by Mr. Lamonia, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Scott, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes. I have Mr. Jeff Johnson, Mr. Rayner's last principal, with us tonight. Mr. Johnson has agreed to collect the resolution and make sure it is entrusted with the family. Thank you.
Thank you for being here with us tonight, Mr. Johnson, and we certainly thank the family of Mr. Rayner. The next item is the CMSL Chesapeake Champions. Dr. Smith.
Yes, next we are recognizing middle school students who have distinguished themselves through special accomplishments at the district level. And we have Mr. Wayne Martin, Director of Student Services, who will facilitate these awards. And I must say that this marks the last time Mr. Martin will provide this service to us as he is retiring this year after 40 years of service.
Mr. Martin is a professional at this service. I will ask Chair Swigert and Superintendent Cotton to join me at the awards table for the presentation.
Madam Chairman, members of the School Board, Dr. Cotton and members of the Superintendent staff, good evening. Tonight we will recognize our 2023 Spring Chesapeake Middle School League, or CMSL Chesapeake Champions. These are students that won an individual city title or were a member of a championship tournament team. It now gives me great pleasure to introduce the CMSL Chesapeake Champions for the spring athletic season. At this time, I ask our Group One CMSL athletes that they would please come forward. This comprises our volleyball and field hockey team members. Please come forward and line up according to the lineup chart facing the School Board. If you'd please take a step forward as I call your name. Arianna Murphy, Morgan White, Madison Cervantes, and their coaches Jack Gale and Ken Strickland are from Indian River Middle. And the Indian River Middle Girls Volleyball Team won the Chesapeake Middle School League, or CMSL, regular season title with a record of nine and one, and were the citywide tournament champions, finishing their year with an undefeated record of 11 and oh. These students and their coaches are here to represent their championship team. Next, we have Isabella Strickline, Lexi Curtis, Natalie Saunders, Leah Orick, and their coaches Jim and Katie Duke. They are from Great Bridge Middle School. And the Great Bridge Middle School Girls Field Hockey Team won the regular season title with a record of nine and oh, and were the citywide tournament champions with an overall record of 11 and oh. These students and their coaches are here to represent their championship team. And at this time, if we have any parents in the audience, please stand to also be recognized by the School Board. Parents, now is that time to come forward for the perfect picture. Congratulations to all of you. It's time for you to move to your right to meet the members of the School Board. This comprises our boys track athletes. Please come forward and line up according to the lineup chart facing the School Board. Group Two. Brayden Thien, Alexander Waderson, and their coach Brett Neder are from Great Bridge Middle. And the Great Bridge Middle School Boys Track Team captured the 2023 CMSL Citywide Championship by scoring a total of 63 and one-half points. These students and their coach are here to represent their championship team. In addition, Chesapeake Public Schools had a number of outstanding male athletes that took first place in the boys' competition. We'd like to recognize them at this time, so please take a step forward as I call your name. First, we have Case Plansford from Great Bridge Middle, and Chase was first place in the shot put competition. Next, Keon Johnson, Caleb Wilson, Brayden Thien, and Alexander Waderson from Great Bridge Middle School. These four students won first place in the four-by-400-meter relay. Cameron Riddick and his coaches Al Whitney and Devon Collins are from Crestwood Middle, and Cameron won first place in the long jump. Quintarius Tillman from Crestwood Middle School. Quintarius won first place in the 100-meter dash, and also won first place in the 200-meter dash. Then Alexander Dunkentell, Cameron Riddick, Quintarius Tillman, and Devarion Hume Spady from Crestwood Middle School. These four students won first place in the four-by-100-meter relay. Nicholas Cruz and his coach Cameron Williams are from Deep Creek Middle, and Nicholas won first place in the 400-meter run. Jackson Powers and coaches Hugh Dawson and Jason Underwood are from Hickory Middle, and Jackson was the gold medalist in the high jump. Spencer Dudley from Hickory Middle School won first place in the 1600-meter run. And finally, Jonathan Porter and coaches Brian Delbridge and Shanita Bell are from Western Branch Middle, and Jonathan was the gold medalist in the 800-meter run. Congratulations to all of these fine young athletes. It's time for you to move to your right to meet the members of the School Board. This comprises our female track athletes. Come forward and line up according to the lineup chart. Group Three athletes at this time. Destiny Gatlin, Marcell Brown, Maria Reynos, and their coaches Ira Spellman are from Hugo A. Owens Middle School. And the Hugo A. Owens Middle School Girls Track Team captured the 2023 CMSL Citywide Championship by scoring a total of 89 points. These students and their coach are here to represent their championship team. Again, Chesapeake Public Schools had a number of outstanding female athletes that placed first in the girls' competition, so please take a step forward as I call your name. Destiny Gatlin from Hugo Owens Middle School captured first place in the long jump, and also won first place in the 100-meter dash. Next, Marcell Brown and Destiny Gatlin from Hugo Owens Middle School. Destiny and Marcell both tied for first place in the high jump. Leah Williams is from Deep Creek Middle, and Leah captured first place in the shot put. Kamora Hinton from Deep Creek Middle captured first place in the 800-meter run. Then Kamora Hinton, Isabella Norman, Xavier Durham, Christina Cooley, and their coach Sparkle Ramsey are from Deep Creek Middle, and these four young ladies captured first place in the four-by-400-meter relay. Abigail Tywu and Coach Alan Harris are from Greenbrier Middle, and Abigail was the gold medalist in the 400-meter run. Kamari Turner, Destiny Lawrence, Tiana White, Ciasia Stiles, and their coach Tanya Poole are from Indian River Middle, and these four ladies captured first place in the four-by-100-meter relay. Taylor Jenkins and Coach Sean Blow are from Western Branch Middle, and Taylor was the champion in the 200-meter dash. And Brooklyn Weaver is from Western Branch Middle, and Brooklyn captured first place in the 1600-meter run. And again, congratulations to all these athletes. It's time for you to move to your right to meet the members of the School Board.
We will now move on to the hearing of citizens. During their allotted time, speakers should observe our rules of decorum and know that expressions of concerns and criticism on matters of school policy and operations is welcome. While the speaker's own comments are welcome, they may not play pre-recorded messages. Dr. Smith, are there any citizens who have requested time to speak this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have 11 citizens requesting time to speak.
I want to thank those speakers who've signed up to address the board this evening. There are two ways that citizens can request time to speak at the meeting. You can call the clerk's office before 12 noon the day of the meeting, or sign up to speak prior to the start of the meeting. All in-person requests to speak must be submitted to the deputy clerk five minutes prior to the published meeting's start time. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board. Once your allotted time is over, we ask that you promptly exit the podium. You may choose to sit in the boardroom if seats are available, but standing or sitting on the floor will not be permitted, and you may not block the exit doors. We would also like to ask that you refrain from any behavior that disrupts the meeting, including the use of profanity, applause, cheering, or jeering. Dr. Smith, please call the first speaker.
Speaker number one is invited to the podium. Speakers are called in numerical order and are asked to state their name and city of residence before they begin.
Vic Nichols, Chesapeake. I'd like to honor Janisha Allen. School safety should include those trained to carry and handle firearms. Kate Nixon was murdered as a Virginia Beach employee because she was refused her right to conceal carry. She had it everywhere else, except where it really mattered. Have you seen her three daughters grow since she was murdered? You seen her husband, Jason? I have. And I can't, I can't sit there and say, no, that that's not something they should do. In the state of Utah, any concealed carry holder is welcome into the schools with their firearms. Because you know what? They've never had a problem. Because no one knows when they come in there, who might be a very peeved-off parent that somebody is going after their kids. Because they can target somebody in a uniform. But parents look like everyone else. I'm concerned that we see recognitions of athletes, but not of our vowsows, our nursing personnel, nor our janitorial service. One last question. Why isn't the School Board, City Council, the Planning Commission, working together on a comprehensive plan that holds off on developments so that no more than seven portables and 100% capacity per school happens until a new school is built? We need to be able to make sure that our kids have the appropriate facilities. Thank you.
Speaker number two, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin. Speaker number three, if you're here, if you'll please come forward to the speaker queue.
Good evening, my name is Robin. I'm a Chesapeake citizen and a former elementary teacher. I understand that the last Satan Club meeting for the present school year was held this past Thursday night at B. M. Williams. My purpose in being here this evening is to ask you to please revoke, I'm sorry, revote on being against allowing non-exempt clubs to be able to rent our school facilities, which is the category the Satan Club falls under. After shedding light on the facts behind the Satan Club's agenda at these last School Board meetings, I want to believe that on requesting a revote, that at least one more of you will vote to put an end to the Satan Club continuing to meet henceforth. We only need one more vote. To quote one of the Satanic Temple members, "You Christians get all worked up. We're going to enter schools, and you'll forget about us." That is chilling and what was allowed to happen. Their mission this school year was accomplished. However, it is not too late to turn the ship around. How long will we allow the minority to dictate the majority that stand for righteousness and truth to be taught and protected in our schools? You have been given the authority to put an end to this evil and the destruction of our children. You have been voted into a position in which your decisions will hold you accountable. Please revote to not allow non-exempt clubs to meet in our schools. Remember that there are alternative locations for the wholesome clubs under this category to still be able to meet. The lives of our children and students in today's world are being torn apart. Already bombarded by social media, there was great confusion and depression in the minds of our children due to the isolation experienced during COVID. Finally, when being able to return to school, students were hit with the new agenda of being woke and the LGBTQ ideology. Sadly, we know it's often the most vulnerable students that are targeted. The unloved, the abused, the The unloved, the abused, the cast aside. All are so desperately looking for a place to be loved and to belong. The result? Suicide is the second-leading cause of death in the U.S. among fifteen-to-nineteen-year-olds. And among the LGBTQ students, forty-five percent seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year, according to a national survey on youth mental health. But Satan didn't stop there. He used another magnet to draw children in for a place to be accepted and enlightened: the Satan Club. Scripture tells us his ultimate agenda is to kill, rob, and destroy, and that is what he's being allowed to do: disguising himself as light and freedom from accountability. He is a liar. The demise of America spiritually and morally and its effect on our children began when we allowed prayer to be taken out of school. Fast forward to Lucian Greaves, the co-founder.
Speaker number three is a no-show, so I'd invite speaker number four to the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Good evening, my name is Patrick Warnament. My school taxes support the school. As an active-duty member of the U.S. Navy, I swore an oath to defend the Constitution and the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. We heard that Steve Bannon was going to be sending his followers to the school board meeting specifically to violate the religious liberty of the citizens and none of their sect. I won't tolerate it. I reference the Virginia Statute for Establishing Religious Freedom, written by Thomas Jefferson and ushered through the state legislature by James Madison in seventeen eighty-six. This statute is still in the books. This statute bans government interference in religion and individual beliefs. I will abbreviate Section One and skip Section Three in the interest of time. Well aware that the opinions and beliefs of men depend not on their own will but follow involuntarily the evidence proposed to their minds, that the impious presumption of legislators and rulers have assumed dominion over the faith of others, setting up their own opinions and modes of thinking as the only true and fallible, hath established and maintained false religions over the greatest part of the world and through all time, that to compel a man to support the propagation of opinions which he disbelieves and abhors is sinful and tyrannical, that our civil rights have no dependence on our religious opinions, that therefore the prescribing any citizen as unworthy of public confidence by laying upon him an incapacity of being called to offices of trust and emolument. Unless he professes or announces this or that religious opinion, is depriving him injurously of those privileges and advantages to which, in common with his fellow citizens, he has a natural right. That the opinions of men are not the object of civil government, nor under his jurisdiction, that to suffer the civil magistrate to intrude his powers in the field of opinion and to restrain the profession or propagation of principles on supposition of their ill tendency is a dangerous fallacy which at once destroys all religious liberty. And finally, that truth is great and will prevail if left to herself, that she is the proper and sufficient antagonist to error and has nothing to fear from the conflict unless by human interposition disarmed of her natural weapons, free argument and debate. Errors cease to be dangerous when it is permitted freely to contradict them. Section Two. We of the General Assembly of Virginia do enact that no man shall be compelled to frequent or support any religious worship, place, or ministry whatsoever, nor shall be enforced, restrained, molested, or burdened in his body or goods, nor shall otherwise suffer on account of his religious repidience or belief, but that all men shall be free to profess and by argument to maintain their opinions in matters of religion, and that the same shall in no wise debidish and enlarge or affect their civil capacities. And contrary to the previous speaker, most of those people who were rejected, and so are suicidal, were rejected by the Christians. I'm done, thank you.
Speaker number five, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Mary Murphy, Chesapeake, Virginia. Good evening, Superintendent Cotton and school board members. I ask you again to protect Chesapeake schoolchildren and recant your support of the after-school Satan Club. The Satanic Temple is a nefarious political activist organization indoctrinating children to deny the existence of evil and to act independently of community. Sure, the facilitators market free thinking, science, and individual expression with cute songs and cartoons, but the content is wrong. It's damaging to innocent, developing minds. Children are told to worship themselves, there is no hell, and Satan is imaginary. That is exactly the problem in our society today. The temple has many problematic characteristics and activities, and the club facilitator has morally objectionable social media posts. In April, Satanic Temple held a SatanCon event in which some of its talks included: "Deconstructing Your Religious Upbringing", "Reclaiming the Trans Body", "Atheistic Strategies for Self-Determination and Empowerment", and "Sins of the Flesh: Satanism and Self-Pleasure". The co-founder is an intelligent, clever man Harvard-educated in neuroscience with a focus in false memory syndrome. Previously a Satanist, his Satanic Temple denies they worship Satan. But then why do they hail him, use demonic symbols, and perform demonic rituals like religious abortions, unbaptisms, black mass? Temple holidays include Unveiling Day, July twenty-fifth, signaling the beginning of the new satanic era which started in 2015. The website homepage is dedicated solely to promoting abortion. Their new religious abortion clinic mails medications to any woman so she can perform an abortion ritual. A former satanic wizard informs that in Satanism, killing something or the death of something is the most effective way of getting your spell accomplished, the ultimate offering to Satan. And if you can kill an unborn, that is his ultimate goal. Temple activities are evil. It's extremely dangerous to expose children to this organization. It was founded to drive God out of schools. They try to use the First Amendment to intimidate, but the First Amendment free speech clause does not provide for unlimited expression. There are content-based restrictions, schools being an area of consideration. You cannot remain blind or lukewarm about exposing children to intrinsic evil. Do not allow the after-school Satan Club to meet in Chesapeake public schools. We're in a huge spiritual battle to stop Satan and his destructive influence. I pray for the founders and members of the temple that they will be freed of Satan's grip, and they may know Jesus' love, peace, and joy. I pray for you to be inspired by the Holy Spirit to protect all God's children. I pray for all of us that we may love and support each other and that our great God will lead us not into temptation and deliver us from evil. Thank you.
Speaker number six, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Jessie Ramsran, South Prince George, Virginia. Well, it seems the Satanic Temple has vanquished Steve Bannon. As you heard, the Steve Bannon war, a white Christian nationalist tried to rally his minions to this particular school board meeting to challenge the legitimacy of the First Amendment, the state-church separation, and the after-school Satan Club once again fail. But the sheer fact that they are coming for abortion rights, they are coming for LGBTQIA+ rights, they are coming for books, and now they're coming for religious freedom, who belongs to a recognized religion that is considered different by another religion just because of a disagreement in beliefs and worship? I'm sure everybody does. So, just so you know, yours could be next. The separation of church and state allows everyone to believe and not believe freely. It will not allow one religion to force your religion out. If you think your religion is the defining religion, is it? Are you sure? Do you want to take that chance? Or do you want the First Amendment to ensure that the machinery of the state will not impose a religion on you? Your church's youth numbers dwindle because of what you take away from society when you claim to be charitable. Here are some kids belonging to a religion that you disagree with that just want to be in a club together, and you'd want to take that away from them. For those who are working to erode the wall of church and state, I say to you, "One nation, all beliefs, Americans united." Thank you.
Speaker number seven, it's your turn at the podium.
My name is Sean Loscher. I live in Chesapeake, and I am reading the statement on behalf of my wife, Terri Loscher, also of Chesapeake, who can't be here tonight due to health issues, but feels that it is imperative that her voice be heard as well. I am writing in support of the after-school Satan Club. I feel that it is important for not only you, the school board, but for the religious members of this community to know that we are not going away. We are not going to stop fighting for our rights. We will not be intimidated by social media zealots calling for groups that are nothing more than hate groups to come and try and silence us. You do not scare us. You are laughable. You will not stop, you will not stop us from raising our children how we want to raise them, teaching them what we want to teach them and letting them make the choices for themselves. We will continue to hold the school board accountable and make sure it does its job, regardless of what their personal beliefs are, to make sure our children are allowed the same privileges that the children of the Good News Club are allowed. It is clear that there are still some in our community who feel that their threats of brimstone, fire, eternal damnation will sway this board to reconsider its choices regarding the after-school Satan Club. And as long as they keep showing up to preach this to you, we will keep showing up to remind you of what you are actually required to do by law. We will continue to demand the same rights as any other club. All of your praying isn't going to make us go away. All the protesting isn't going to make us go away. Calling us pedophiles isn't going to make us go away. Just a side note to that, if you want to discuss those specific statistics on who has the pedophiles and who doesn't, I'll be happy to bring those numbers the next time we meet. Bullying isn't going to make us go away. We won't be silenced. Hell, Satan.
Speaker number eight, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Callie Brown, and I'm here as a twelfth-grade student from Western Branch High School who lives in Chesapeake. Well, I've been a part of this school district since I moved here four years ago. Never have I faced as many challenges as I have since I came out as transgender this past December. And the latest of these ended up costing me weeks of hassle just to reach a resolution, which just left me in a position still unequal to that of my peers. It started with the announcement of the Western Branch High School Music Department spring to Walt Disney World. And as a trans member of the marching band, I was naturally unsure of what room I was staying during the trip. So I talked with the band director, Mrs. Zimmerman, and she in turn spoke with the administration. I had to wait a couple of weeks before hearing back, but I was told that I'd have to spend each night in men's room. I was disappointed about understanding since at first I had just come out and I didn't have all my official documentation changed, but once I did, I reached out again, and I had to wait again several weeks before even hearing back, and I was told the exact same thing. This time, however, I was not so understanding. Because why should a girl be required to stay in a boy's room? Some may tell me to think of the other students' parents and what they might say, but I asked, "What about my parents? Do they not matter? Does it not matter what they might say about their daughter being forced into a room with a bunch of boys? And what of those boys' parents, too? I'm sure they wouldn't have been so fond of such a decision either, so why is it that we focused only on the transphobic parents and their feelings? What makes them so much more important than everyone else? The rights guaranteed to me, a student of Chesapeake public schools, by Title IX of the Education Amendments of nineteen seventy-two are supposed to ensure protection from sex-based discrimination in an educational environment. As of June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, the Department of Education has confirmed sex-based discrimination encompasses sexual orientation and gender identity, and thus being forced into a room that does not correlate with my gender is not only unfair and discriminatory, but also a violation of my rights. This is furthered by the fact that Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, often used as the guide to inform Title IX, was ruled by the Supreme Court to encompass discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation and transgender status as of June fifteenth, twenty twenty. In addition, the court cases of Whitaker, the Kennesaw, G.G. versus Gloucester County School Board, and Dallas High School Student Parents versus Dallas School District all maintain that requiring trans students to use facilities that do not correlate with their gender is discriminatory, and the opposite is not in violation of the rights of parents or cisgender students. Not only this, but they make it clear that requiring trans students to use separate facilities is also unfair and consequently a violation of their rights. They're sending an email with the same facts I just relayed to you. I heard back almost immediately, as in the very next day. All of a sudden, I was good enough for their time, but as evident by the response, still not good enough to be treated the same as everyone else. I was only offered a room to myself. Still disappointed but tired, and not wanting to cause any more trouble for Mrs. Zimmerman, who had been incredibly helpful throughout all this, I accepted the offer. But not only did it take weeks, months even, of waiting and struggling, I was still left in a position that was deemed a violation of my rights numerous times before. The entire situation was incredibly ridiculous, stressful, and inequitable, and no other student should have to go through this. So that's why I'm here before you tonight, action only to be taken sooner or later, so why not sooner? Things like this don't lie dormant forever. There always comes a day when the downtrodden speak up. Ergo, I'm urging you to make the necessary changes that would allow all students within Chesapeake public schools to exist in a fair and equitable environment. Thank you.
Speaker number nine, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
What up? My name is Janay, but my preferred name is Rose Bastet. I live in Norfolk, less than half a mile away from the Chesapeake line. So despite your continued efforts to suppress our equal rights and access to a publicly-funded building, we continue to grow and thrive as a community. With the new rule that was imposed by you all right before our last in-school meeting, we had our greatest turnout yet. More than double the children showed up to support us. And we hit exactly that arbitrary rule of seventy-five percent of our attendees being Chesapeake residents. So, thank you sincerely. Nothing unites people like fighting against a common oppressor. It's very disheartening to know that the school board and some of the other people in this room not only adhere to false supernatural beliefs, but you allow your beliefs to affect your job as a public servant. You're allowing a fear of something that doesn't exist to rule over you. Open your minds to what we're actually saying to you. We do not believe in a god or devil. There is no heaven, there is no hell. There is only this life, and every single human being deserves to live a happy, healthy, and fulfilling life. If you don't believe in that, then you're the evil ones, not us. We have been nothing but peaceful and kind despite continued threats of violence. I've personally been the recipient of a lot of scrutiny, as you heard, and threats. People have threatened to bomb my house while my husband, my son, yeah, I'm a parent, by the way, and my three animals were inside. Others have let me know that they know where I live by mailing me really strange books. But I'm not afraid. I will not be deterred despite facing some very tangible threats from good Christians. We are simply demanding what is rightfully ours, equal rights that's protected by our Constitution. The fact that you're willing to ignore that and try to find loopholes to prevent us from practicing our rights is incredibly un-American. As much as I don't agree with or believe in any theistic religions, I will always fight for the right for those to practice what they believe in. It hurts that the same wouldn't be done for us. Another issue that we've been facing since the first meeting in school is that protesters have been showing up and filming our kids going to and from the club without parental consent. In order to protect our children from these predators, we had volunteers show up to help block our families with giant umbrellas. These volunteers stayed outside the entire time during the meetings, and the only adults allowed in were our volunteers and the parents and guardians of the children that have signed permission slips. These would be the sixteen adults that my new buddy Steven, who has spoken against us many times, has claimed showed up for the club. He's aware that they were never allowed inside. They stayed outside the entire time, but he still chose to bear false witness so that he could continue to further his false narrative of our club. With that, I would like to leave you with a quote from one of our founding fathers, John Adams. "We should begin by setting conscience free. When all men and all religions shall enjoy equal liberty, property, and an equal chance for honors and powers, we may expect that improvements will be made in the human character and the state of society."
Speaker number ten, it's your turn at the podium.
Good evening, I am Kaylee Duncan. I am a Chesapeake resident. I'm here to support the Satanic Temples' after-school Satan program. I had a big thing all put together of like the satanic panic and kind of how it all got started, but you know, it's the end of the school year. Figure it'll be a little more fun to go through some things. Couple folks touched on the evils of Satan and how we're the majority. I thought I'd read a brief list of murderers that were Catholic, Christian, or Mormon before their arrests. So you got Albert Fish, child murderer, cannibal, he's a Christian. Dennis Rader, the Bind Torture Killer, Lutheran. Dean Coral, pedophile and child murderer, Catholic. Ed Gein, you know, the original Leatherface, Lutheran. Gary Ridgeway, Green River Killer, loved killing prostitutes, Baptist. H.H. Holmes, the owner of the Murder Hotel in Chicago, Christian. Herbert Mullen believed his murders would stop Jesus from creating the next apocalypse, Catholic. John Wayne Gacy, the Killer Clown Pedophile, Catholic. Peter Sutcliffe believed God told him to murder prostitutes, Catholic. Ted Bundy, I mean, it's Ted Bundy, Mormon. Timothy McVeigh, the Oklahoma City Bomber, Catholic. Okay, so there's a little bit of evil that I think we might all be pretty familiar with, maybe some not so much, you know. Another fun list I have is a list of cults that started as Christian, Catholic, or Mormon. You've got the Family International, formerly the Children of God, Christian sect that preached that parents were to have intercourse with their children for enlightenment. The People's Temple started as a utopia for underprivileged people, built by a man that spent his life learning the tricks of the evangelical zeitgeist, fell to drug addiction delusions, and a big murder-suicide. The Branch Davidians started as an offshoot of Adventism, and then it just became gun hoarding and child brides, that sort of thing. Heaven's Gate Group started on- Heaven's Gate Group started on basic Christian concept that kind of morphed into God as an alien and he's going to take us away. That led to the suicide of 39 people. The Ant Hill Kids, another Adventist offshoot, doomsday cult ripe with sexual and physical abuse of children and women. And you got the Fundamentalist Latter-day Saints, that's a pretty broad one. Group of Mormons, including Warren Jeffs, who are purveyors of the legal loopholes that allow children to marry adults. They're also purveyors of polygamy. And then a little closer to home, just real quick before I close up, number of religious leaders, sexual allegations in Virginia. You got 18 Southern Baptist pastors credibly accused as of 2022. And then as of today...
Speaker number 11, it's your turn at the podium. Please state your name and city of residence before you begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Fletcher from Chesapeake, Virginia, and I just recently heard about the Satan Club. I was kind of surprised that you all allowed that to happen here in our school system in Chesapeake. So I'm here to express my opposition to the after-school Satan Club. I'm a Christian. I'm sure there's a lot of Christians that live here that are parents. I'm sure a lot of you are. I'm sure some of you voted for and some voted against. And I'd ask you to reconsider and think of the children and the potential harm that could be caused to them to be influenced by this club. I'm sure that you know the difference between good and evil and right and wrong, and I'm sure you all want what's best for the children. So I just ask you to put an end to this club and not allow it to continue. Thank you.
Madam Chair, this concludes our speakers.
Thank you for sharing your comments. Our practice is to receive information, however, we do not usually engage in dialogue, and that is our intent tonight. If appropriate and not already provided, someone from the superintendent's staff will evaluate your concern and provide a response. We will now move on to the consent agenda. We have a motion for approval from Mr. Mercer, a second from Mr. Lamonia. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes.
Now moving on to the information agenda, the first item is the monthly financial report. Mrs. Lucente.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packet, you have a letter regarding the April 23 financial report. We are expecting to meet revenue budgets. We are still watching sales tax closely. It is not performing as it has in the last couple of years, so the end result of the revenue, excess revenue is going to depend largely on what happens with sales tax. Our expenditures are still keeping up with expectations. We're spending fuel and utilities faster than we have in the past, but we have been able to manage that, knowing that that was going to happen all year. One item that we do have to have board authorization or action on tonight is transfer authorization. At this time of the year, we always come forward and ask for authorization to do transfers between programs. We only do this one time a year. It's kind of in keeping with the city charter. So we are asking for authorization for $9 million of transfers between funds. And what will happen is we'll make those transfers, and then when we bring back the June financial statements in August or September, you'll get a list of what got transferred from where. So if you have questions, I'm available for questions. And the only other thing I would need is authorization for that transfer limit.
Is there a motion to approve authorization for the transfers? Motion made by Mr. Poole, is there a second? Second by Mr. McCormick, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed? Dr. Smith.
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes.
The next item is the recommended health insurance premiums. To Ms. Lucente again.
It's me again. Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, we're going to do a short coverage of budget approval and what that means in reference to employee benefits, and then we're going to look at the 2024 plan premiums. As you recall, some of you were on the board last year. We brought this up before, that when you approve the budget, you're not technically approving the premiums, you're approving the amount of money that the school system is going to provide towards the total cost of insurance. Some of the unwritten rules that we've been operating under forever is that we would provide at least two health plans for our employees. We're currently providing three with the implementation of the Affordable Care Act. We also have to comply with the Affordable Care Act. And that within the ACA eligibility groups, which are required eligibility for employees and their dependents, that we don't want to drive employees to a particular plan based on the amount of premium that they pay towards the premiums. We do provide a wellness credit for actives and retirees, and that's $20 per pay period or $400 per year. In order to receive that, once a year, they have to do some biometric screenings and answer some questions. We want to continue to provide spousal coverage, and we want to continue to provide retiree coverage. Okay? Oh, wrong one. Sorry. The budget approval and employee benefits. Budget approval, again, represents the total approved budget allocations from all sources. And we provide funding from the operating budget, the grants, and school nutrition services. The budget amounts in the budget process encompass the last four months of the plan year 23, which we just started, and the first six months of plan year 24. So there'll be what's called an overhang into the 24-25 year for the increases for plan year 24, because the plan year runs January to December, fiscal year runs July to June. Changes to the premiums, the plan designs, and our contributions of the employee amounts per pay period will impact and do impact all the budgets, all the operating, all the grants that have positions in them, and the school nutrition services. The 23-24 allocations that you'll see, or actually that are included in the budget, are based upon the premium rates, our contribution towards the premiums, and the total planned costs. The dental premium is not expected to have any changes. We're not seeing any unusual activity in dental. Health was a trend that was larger than we anticipated. If you remember, during budget, we were anticipating a 10% trend. We're actually closer to 11 and a half on the active plans, and our pre-65 plans are starting to see increased cost also. So they're going to see a pre-65 increase. They had a 6% cost increase, and it's a very small plan. There's less than 400 people on that plan, and it has to be rated separately. We're going to bring the retiree information back later this summer, either in June or July, most likely July or August. Our contributions on the retirees, the pre-65s and the post-65s are capped by a policy. So it's $950 for a pre-65 per month if they have 100% eligibility, and $200 per month for a Medicare-eligible employee. The total planned costs, I'm sorry, I turned the page too soon. What you see here are the total planned costs. And we talk about healthcare, it's your health plan, your dental plan, the costs that we pay for the pharmacy, it's a contracted service, the costs we pay for the clinics, that's a contracted service, along with the rental for those facilities, the insurance, utilities, things like that, the wellness credits, and the retiree healthcare. So our total projected costs for 24, the plan year 24, are $93.7 million. The employees will contribute $10.4 million, and the retirees will contribute about $3.3. So the school board will provide $80 million towards the cost of our total health plan. So, and that is the absolute largest cost in the school system budget outside of salaries is health insurance. It's larger than VRS and it's larger than FICA, even put together almost. The plan year premiums, we have finally gotten to where we have actuarial premiums, meaning that the cost for a plan, a healthcare plan, either HMO or PPO High or PPO Basic, those costs relate to expected costs within that plan. So there's no HMO subsidizing the PPO High, or the PPO High subsidizing the PPO Low. There's also actuarial rating inside the plan. You know, we have separate tiers. We have employee, employee plus child, employee plus spouse, family, and we still have double employee and double family. We don't subsidize within the tiers anymore either. What that does is if people choose to move from one plan to another, the relative costs from moving from an HMO to a PPO are taken care of in the estimated cost for the plan and the estimated cost for the premiums. It's taken more years than I care to count to get to this point, but we are finally there. So our tiers are related actuarially to expected costs, and our plans are related to expected costs by plan. We have about 4,748 contracts on enrollment. As you can see from this, most of our enrollment is in the HMO. That is something that has occurred over the last several years. We had prior, I guess, four years ago, we only had a HMO and a PPO. PPO got to be prohibitively expensive for employees, so we closed the PPO High and put in an HDHP plan. Most people went to the HMO. The PPO reopened last year with the changes in the benefit plan designs, and we replaced the HDHP with the PPO Basic. As you can see, the enrollment between those two PPOs plans are very similar. So we are still seeing a lot of people in the HMO plan. Of the 4,700 contracts, we actually have 4,900 employees enrolled, because a double employee counts as two employees. So you have to add the double employees to the 4,700 contracts and the double families. So 80% of our eligible employees are taking our health insurance plan, which means 20% of the people who are eligible to take it are not taking it. So that's just a statistic to be aware of. This table shows you who we are required to cover. We are required under the ACA to offer coverage to the employee only and the double employees, because if we didn't have a double employee tier, we'd have two contracts. And the double tiers were created because as a self-insured plan, we pay Anthem by the number of contracts. So Anthem looks at a double employee as an employee plus spouse. Okay? We can set that up with the same premium and provide a different contribution. So an employee, a double employee and a double family are two adults, both of whom work for Chesapeake. So we are saving about 200 contracts when you pay per month for administration from Anthem. It's, I look for pennies everywhere. It's not a whole lot of money. It only has one comma, but it has six figures. So we're required to cover the 2,315 employees and double employees, and 1,186 employee plus children and double families. What we're not required to offer, but we do offer, is coverage to spouses and families. Now, those adults on those plans are not CPS employees. Okay? So there's about 1,247 of them. So you can see it's about 26% of our enrollment is employees plus spouse and employee plus family. Okay? Now we're going to walk through my famous tables that nobody likes but me. So the gray section is what the employee is paying right now per pay period. We pay over 20 pays. Most of our employees are 10-month employees, and not everybody takes option pay, which would give them pay over July and August. So we take our premiums from September to June. All right? So right now, on the PPO Basic, you can see on the upper left-hand side, that's the PPO Basic, which is our ACA plan. So you see $21 for employee only, employee plus children. Now that's before the wellness credit. The wellness credit is $20 per pay period. So you subtract $20 from that employee only, employee plus children, so for a dollar per pay period, you can cover yourself and your children. Inside the PPO, HMO, it's, what is that? $25? $5? And you'll see what the change is going to be on the employee plus children. But the PPO Basic meets our affordability requirements under the Affordable Care Act. So that's our base plan. All right? So those are each one of our current employee contributions. The PPO Basic, and you'll see this throughout the other two plans, you'll generally see decreases in the double family, you might see a decrease in the employee plus children, and you'll see a $20 per pay period increase on the employee plus spouse and employee plus family. So in this plan, which is less than 340 people, or 370 people, the majority of the people are going to see a $20 increase, and there'll be another group of people that will see a decrease, but everybody else is not seeing a change at all. In the, whoops, I keep hitting the wrong one. In the HMO, we are reducing the employee plus child from $50, from $85 to $50. So there'll be a $35 per pay period savings for those individuals, and a $52 per pay period savings for the double family, and a $20 increase on the employee plus spouse and the employee plus family. Again, that is our largest enrollment group, about 85% of our plan enrollment is there. On the PPO High, we are reducing the employee plus, employee only and employee plus children and the two double tiers. And again, the employee plus spouse and the employee plus family are a plan to go up $20 per pay period. We are planning this year to do some things to try to reduce our trend going forward. Some of you who were here for the planning session last year heard us talk about a surgery option. We have an RFP we're getting ready to do on that. We're planning on doing a claims audit so we can make sure that Anthem is properly adjudicating our claims, which will also include a pharmacy audit. And we will probably do another dependent audit, just so we can get some data about how many spouses are eligible under their employer, how many are not, how many are getting covered that really should still not be covered. We did one several years ago and ended up with about 200 spouses that we removed from the plan because they were not eligible, because they were no longer married. So that's what I have. So if you have any questions, now's your chance.
I don't see any questions, so thank you.
I'm glad. Thank you.
We are now moving on to the PPEA guidelines. Ms. Tutz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the April planning meeting, we discussed this. Tonight, we have Mr. Greg Hanson from our New Construction Director. He's going to give you a very brief presentation as a follow-up. If y'all remember, we had some proposed guidelines. We're going to hit the highlights. They're in your packet again this evening, and if all goes well, we'll be looking for approval at the next meeting. Greg?
Thank you, Ms. Tutz. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good to see you all again. The Public Private Education Facilities and Infrastructure Act, or PPEA, was presented to you by Mr. Chuck McPhillips, attorney with Kaufman and Condoleezza, at your April 4th planning meeting. He brought you the draft guidelines that have been developed for you. PPEA was adopted by the state legislature in 2002. The PPA provides an alternative delivery method for acquiring, developing, or operating a public facility, which includes educational facilities. As adopted by the state, I could hit the button. In order for you to use the PPEA, localities and school divisions must draft and approve their own PPEA guidelines that mirror the state requirements. That's what you have in front of you. As a brief overview of PPEA, projects may be either solicited or unsolicited. Solicited proposals are ones that are defined by the school division, and they're put out on the market to solicit proposals to address those needs, similar to an RFP. An unsolicited proposal is one that comes in just as it says unsolicited, which we then can advertise that we've received an unsolicited proposal and we're receiving alternate proposals that address the same need it's been defined. Under either method, the proposal is evaluated by the superintendent and his select committee. Through that evaluation, once an agreement is reached, either interim or final agreement, the superintendent would make a recommendation to the school board. There is a public review process throughout the process of both a proposal and the agreement, which would include a public hearing that you would hold prior to your approval. The school board, as responsible public entity, and city council, as the affected jurisdiction, both must approve the agreement once it's reached. So briefly, a summary of the next steps. Just to remind you, PPEA is another tool in the toolbox. We don't have to use it, but it's there and available if we want to do it. Primarily, we do design, bid, build, construction projects. PPA provides a little more flexibility, plus it gives an entity the opportunity to bring an idea to us that we either haven't considered or haven't included in the capital plan. The draft guidelines are in your packet tonight, pretty much the same document that you got on April 4th. And these guidelines will be on your consent agenda for approval at the next school board meeting. So if you have any questions between now and then, please be sure to let staff know, and we will get you the answers.
Ms. Dean?
Yes, I just have two questions. The first one, you mentioned maybe a story, Dr. Cotton, around a selection committee. What would, who would form, who would make up that committee?
I don't know that we've gotten that far yet. Ms. Tutz, have we talked about who would be on our committee?
I apologize, I don't need names of people. I'm just trying to understand.
Traditionally, you would have people who would already be one to sit on our RFP. Traditionally, you would have people who would already be one to sit on our RFP. Quite honestly, my staff would be on there, which includes Greg would be on there, Director of New Construction. We've got staff architects. We have project managers. I may be on the committee. We may have someone from school plants. I will tell you, if there, if it's one that we think has some interest and it impacts a particular school, we may have them on the selection committee, those type of things who provide input. And if it's really complicated, or there's a unique financing component of it, we'd have Ms. Lucente on there, those type of things. It kind of depends on what the project is and how complex it is.
Okay. So, from a process standpoint, I know it said then it would have to get approved by school board and city council. But, I guess what I'm trying to avoid is a lot of time and resources and energy focused on things, since this does open the door for unsolicited, being spent on things that aren't going to get approved. So, have you, do you, have you thought through that, what that process is going to look like? When will school board and city council be engaged? Hopefully, it's not at the end.
Well, I think it really, again, depends on how complex it is. And we have the ability to say, "Thank you, but no thank you." You know, this is not something we're interested in, or someone who might not have put as much thought in it. There is a component in there where they have to pay a fee. So, that kind of gives them a little bit more, make sure they have some skin in the game and make sure they're serious about their proposal and they put a lot of forethought into it. I would also expect most would have made some type of contact with us, or at least would have looked at our capital plan to see what our needs are. But, you know, this is new for us, so we'll, we'll have to see. But, we do have the ability to say, "This is not something we're interested in," or "It's not, it's not a good proposal," and "We're not going to waste staff's time," or obviously, your time as well, or councils.
Okay. Last question, I swear. Have you looked at resourcing from your team's perspective? And are you going to, do you think it's going to require an increase in headcount to support the intake process?
I don't at this particular time. No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mercer?
I'm just looking. I wanted to read today on page four of these guidelines. Does the selection committee, the chair, the superintendent designate, and then list that the director of purchasing, the chief financial officer, the chief operations officer, and such other CPS officials are employed as the superintendent designate. It's already in the guidelines here what the makeup of that committee would be in a general sense. Now, I think the superintendent has here the ability to be able to invite one or representatives from the city to participate on the selection committee as well. So, yeah, it's, I think it's all, the makeup's all right there.
And I think we have some flexibility to bring other people in, depending, again, on what the project would be. We certainly need finance and we may need someone from the city finance component if it's something that we're doing creatively. If it's kind of standard and we already have the money, I don't know that we'll, we'll need their input, other than a quick conversation with Vicki and across the street.
Well, I, I think it has some benefits. I guess my one concern is the loss of some degree of authority, that it's going to be somewhat of a shared authority. And that works sometimes, like if you're going to have a joint project, like a pool at one of the schools and the city's going to have some responsibility on that. I just, you know, most of the time, the city authorized capital improvement funds and then it goes out to bid and the school board has the ultimate authority in making those decisions. But, this is another tool in the toolbox. And, you know, we don't have to go this way, but we can at least have this prepared to do it.
I see no additional questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
The last item on the information agenda for tonight is proposed revisions to school board policies. Dr. Faust.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This evening, staff is presenting the board with proposed updates to Policies 9-20.1 and 6-36. Those are the personal communication devices and acceptable telecommunications and internet use for students policies. Starting in February, we conducted meetings and committees, which included students, parents, staff, and school administration to provide feedback on issues around personal communication devices, or PCDs, in our schools. Fairly universally, the feedback has been that there is a problem and that the use of PCDs is impacting the learning environment adversely. Personal communication devices are all non-CPS devices that are capable of cellular and wireless communication. And they include things like computers, tablets, mobile phones, smartwatches. And the changes that we're recommending would result in condensing the personal communications devices policies into a single policy, 9-20.1, and prohibiting personal devices from being used in school, except for those required for medical or specific academic instructional needs, such as an IEP or a 504 plan requirement. Whether intentional or not, personal communication devices can remove people socially, intellectually, and emotionally from being present with those that they are physically around. The recommendation to move CPS to away during the day is intended to acknowledge that the use of PCDs on school grounds must be appropriately regulated to protect students, staff, and the learning environment. This is presented as a means to reduce disruptions to the learning environment and to maintain order on school property and during school-related functions, both on and off campus. Policy 9-20.1 was last updated prior to CPS's rollout of one-to-one student devices. At that time, it was written to support BYOD, or Bring Your Own Devices, a way to offset the fact that not all students had CPS-issued devices. Now, CPS is fully one-to-one. There is no need for students to bring personal devices to school. These changes address a new reality for students at CPS, which is now possible because all students are assigned a one-to-one device at their school. We want all students and teachers to have the opportunity for meaningful face-to-face connections. Being distracted or unfocused has increased social isolation issues. And we know that personal devices are directly connected to discipline issues and have an adverse effect on student academic attainment. We are recommending the implementation of away for the day for all of these reasons. For grades nine through 12, mobile phones would be permitted at lunch while in the cafeteria at the discretion of the school administration and staff. This policy revision is being presented for information and at the board's discretion will be included as part of the consent agenda at our next meeting. If there are any questions, I'm happy to take those.
I see no questions, so thank you. We are now moving on to the action agenda. Final action on the school board's proposed budgets. Ms. Lucente.
And I'm going to hand it off to Ms. Glau, Director of Budget. She's going to do the presentation.
Good evening, Chair Swigert, Vice Chair Mercer, and school board members. This evening's budget presentation provides an update to the board's proposed fiscal year 2324 budget as a result of new city information. The presentation concludes with a request for board action and the anticipated next steps in the budget process. We will begin with an update to operating revenue. On May ninth, the city advised an additional $2.4 million in revenue will be provided due to revised revenue sharing formula estimates. This additional revenue results in a total operating revenue of $598.9 million. And it includes the previous $7.9 million reduction in state revenues and $1.4 million increase in city revenues. To balance expenditures to revenue, expenditures are adjusted by $2.4 million from the April 27th budget update. This adjustment includes restoring 12 positions removed from the initial February budget, including restoring five reading specialists, four guidance counselors, for a total of six additional guidance counselors, a dual enrollment coordinator, an assistant attendance coordinator, and a technology innovation coordinator. The adjustments also include an additional $250,000 transfer to the athletic fund to support increases for middle school athletic trainers and event security. Restoring $1 million to the computer replacement program, $40,000 in support of police rate adjustments and a match required to support a new security grant that is currently under application, and approximately $200,000 to support anticipated health insurance increases. With these adjustments, total operating expenditure is balanced at $598.9 million. Since the initial board proposed budget adopted on March 13th, total revenues from all funds declined by approximately $3.6 million, with a $4.1 million revenue reduction in the operating fund and a $500,000 revenue increase in the athletic fund. At this time, we request board adoption of the adjusted fiscal year 2324 budget. If adopted, the city will be provided with the board's adopted budget to facilitate council appropriation adjustments scheduled to take place on June 13th. Additionally, we ask at this time for the board to request city council to reappropriate any fiscal year 2223 reversion back to the school division. The recommended use of the reversion will be identified and requested at a later date. As for the next steps in the budget process, city council's final appropriations are expected on June 13th. And if there are any changes to the state budget, an update will be provided to the board in July or August, and reappropriations will be requested if needed. Thank you for your time this evening. We're happy to address any questions you may have.
Dr. Walker?
Just two quick things. Number one, I just wanted to say how excited I am to see the reading specialist back in. And thank you for prioritizing that. Because our elementary schools, especially some of our larger ones, that's going to just go a long way instructionally and with the staff support. So, thank you for that. The second question I had is, I didn't know if you were able to share, or if you know where the additional guidance counselors are going to be going?
Do you have that, Ms. Lucente?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but we can.
We'll, we'll get that to the board members. I know, Dr. Walker, we had talked about getting the board a list of those, but I'll get that to you. It's based on student numbers and that's how we allocate those, but we'll get you a list and the, and the communication to the board by Friday.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Lamonia?
Hey, Dr. Cotton. Also, you know, thank you all say that as well for the re inclusion of the reading specialist, but also the re inclusion of the, you know, of those mental health enhancement positions as well, super important, as we all know. Can you also, though, provide a summary for public awareness of any other programs in that, in the mental health area that have been established or are pending currently?
Sure. I can start and then I'm going to pass it to Dr. Miller, who I've asked to share some more details. But, we've added several guidance counselors over the last few years. We've also added behavior specialists, which our principals are most excited to have, serving many of our elementary schools. We also have student engagement specialists, which Dr. Miller will talk about. We've been working toward fully staffing those. We've, one of the challenges we faced is it's hard to find professionals who meet the qualifications for some of those positions. So, we're working towards fully staffing those. But, I'm going to let Dr. Miller share some more details. Go ahead, Dr. Miller.
Thank you, Dr. Cotton. And a great question, Mr. Lamonia. We have been really diligently working on our mental health supports for our students. Currently, in this budget, as you know, we budgeted for four out of the six guidance counselors that we've requested. We've added behavior specialists as well as student engagement specialists. And those student engagement specialists, currently, we have recently just hired two. So, now, we're up to four student engagement specialists in the Department of Office of Student Conduct and Support. Another one that I think a lot of people aren't aware of is that from our military, we have military counselors that are not budgeted through the operating budget. And we currently have 17 military family life counselors that are in our schools that are working with our kids. Not only are they working with the military connected, as long as they're working with military-connected students, they can also work with the general population of students. And just to give you a rundown of what we currently have as far as the mental health, there is budgeted right now. We attend behavior consultants. We have budgeted 24 school psychologists. And as I share with you, the student engagement and resource, we're budgeted for 4.5. We filled the four, but we're still looking for a part-time person. School counselors, we have 111.5 counselors. And psych interns, we have two. For a total of 152 mental health professionals that are budgeted, of the 152, 131 are currently filled. So, just to let you know that, along with the mental health counselors as well. I hope that answered your question.
Ms. Dean?
Yes, Dr. Miller, you mentioned the behavioral specialists. What is their certification in terms of where they're certified?
That is not in my area. So, I can get that information for you, but that would be coming out of special education. So, I don't want to misspeak on that.
Okay. But, they are targeted, targeted towards special education. And we're not, I guess I'm trying to understand, we're talking about mental health?
Yes.
And so, are the counselors or the specialists that we're bringing in, are they actually certified?
Yes.
In adolescent mental health?
Absolutely. Yes, they are. That I do know.
Not just their degree, but also their.
Yes, they're certified. And I do know the student engagement counselors are certified as well.
Okay. Okay. If I, I would just, whoever has it, I would just love to know what those certifications are.
Certainly. We'll get that information.
We can provide that to you, Ms. Dean. They are, the requirements were more stringent, but the state has provided more flexibility for us. That's how we added the student engagement specialists. Because initially, all of the school divisions were very excited to add more behavior specialists, but we couldn't find the people who had the certification. So, that's been expanded. So, we'll provide more details for you and we can have that for you in the next couple of days.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
I see no additional questions, so I will entertain a motion for approval of the budget. Motion made by Mr. Poole. Is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Walker. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Dr. Smith?
Motion carries with all board members present voting yes.
Thank you. There being no items on the action agenda, we'll now move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just a couple announcements. As a reminder, Monday, May 29th is Memorial Day. Schools and offices will be closed. I'm sure a lot of people don't need that reminder, but we like to put that out there. Also, graduation is right around the corner and we are excited that all seven Chesapeake High Schools will host their respective graduation ceremonies at Old Dominion University's Chartway Arena in June. Each graduate will receive 10 guest tickets and all ceremonies will be livestreamed and recorded for those unable to attend in person. As was done last year, to allow ample space for our families to enjoy the program, the school board will be seated in the back of the arena. But, we've been doing that for the past couple of years and that has tended to, to work well. With that, I'm going to move on to the spotlight as we begin to wrap up the school year. It's always exciting to share the end-of-the-year celebrations and recognitions with our school board and our community. Last week was National Police Week and our local Chesapeake Police Department and Sheriff's Office honored the occasion with a community outreach event at Grassville High School. The school invited deputies and officers to visit for lunch with law enforcement. It was a great opportunity to thank them for their service to our community, but it also gave students and staff an opportunity to laugh, eat, and even play some games together. We are incredibly grateful for our partnerships with our first responders in Chesapeake and thank you for all you do. I'd also like to send a special thank you to our 2223 retirees. I was happy to join them, along with several members of our board, for a ceremony and reception at Grassville High School to honor their years of service to our school district. We are saying goodbye to more than 150 dedicated employees this year, who collectively represent more than 3,000 years of service to our district. That service has been defined by commitment, excellence, and innovation, and passion. I hope you'll join me in congratulating them on a job well done. May is full of celebrations for our staff. On May 10th, we honored our dedicated school nurses and clinic assistants for the incredibly important role they play in helping maintain a healthy and safe school and work environment. We were happy to facilitate a campaign of appreciation for them this year by asking students, families, and colleagues to send them a digital thank you. We received over 200 messages of gratitude for the important work they do. We also recognize three of those individuals for going above and beyond this school year. I'd like to personally congratulate our clinic assistant of the year, Lori Rodiger, from Grassville High School, our nurse rookie of the year from Deep Creek Central Elementary, Lauren Wilson, and our nurse of the year, Gloria McGraw, from Thurgood Marshall Elementary School. Congratulations. We also spent time last week celebrating another employee group that is vital to the health and safety of our students and staff. Our custodial services staff ensures that our schools and buildings are ready for learning. are ready for learning and operations each and every day. There is no true way to thank them for all their hard work, but we hope they felt appreciated all week and enjoyed time at the custodial banquet this past Saturday. Many members of the team were, were recognized at the event for their outstanding contributions and hard work. To wrap up tonight, I'm very proud to share that Karen Daniel, a computer science teacher at Hugo A. Owens Middle School, was recently named the 2223 Virginia Department of Education Computer Science Educati- Educator of the Year. And take a look at how she's advancing computer science in our district.
My favorite is when kids come in here and they tell me off the break, "I didn't want to do computer science." And then halfway through the class, they're like, "I didn't know it was going to be like this."
She's definitely inspired me to code more because I'm not a big coder and she helps me with, like, challenging myself and doing more things that I'm not used to doing with robotics.
She has done an amazing job. She hit the ground running. She was instrumental in helping write our curriculum. Her lessons are always engaging. Whenever I go in the classroom, kids are having fun. They want to sign up for the class again.
Ms. Daniels is very enthusiastic about computer science.
You are my hero, Nathan, because that's exactly what you're supposed to do.
Sometimes I can hear her through the wall on teaching because she's so animated with the kids and it keeps them engaged.
Uh, she's not like afraid to have, like, laugh and have jokes with the students and like keeps a positive attitude even like when something goes wrong in a program.
She's always been helpful. She gives really good ideas for us. And if you have any problems, it's always easy.
I'm really proud of her. I'm proud to know her and I'm proud to work with her.
She's just like one of the best teachers I've ever met at the school.
And board members, I want to remind everyone that, uh, this is all a part of our Go Virginia grant that we awarded a few years ago to add computer science to our middle schools. So we're real excited to see this program develop. I also want to mention that Adrian Sawyer, our supervisor of elementary science, was selected as the 2223 Administrators and Counselors Computer Science Honoree. And though she wasn't featured in this video, I know that you had a chance to see her at State of the Schools and the kindergarten video where we talked about computer science. So, Madam Chair, members of the board, that completes my spotlight for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Cotton. Last on our agenda this evening is board member items. Does any board member have an item to bring before the group? Okay, seeing none, I will take just a moment to wish a very happy birthday to Ms. Stutz, who celebrated a few days ago, and to both Ms. Lucente and Mr. McCormick, who are celebrating in a few days. Happy birthday to all of you. And with that, I'd.